... dedication by Lee Landzati.
Dear Almighty, let us be grateful for your presence and all these people here to make the right decisions and count on you to do what you have to do for us and thank you for that day. Again, I thank you for this blessing and you just stand my prayer, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Larry Bud?
Here.
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 Martin Boda?
Here.
Earl Walters?
Here.
The chairman of first card out with the oath of office for new Tennessee police officer.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer according to the best of your ability?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Don't hurt him. Mr. Nelson, Christopher came to us, he's a native New Yorker, so if you need to know anything about the Big Apple, he's the man to ask. He's been here since age thirteen, fourteen, thirteen. And he has promised to respond to your calls quicker than he delivered the pizzas when he took care of Angelo's and then he wants to pay kids. Back in June, he graduated from the 460 hours, he was the last cadet for that class. It has now increased. We made contact, maintain contact with the director and the instructors. Mr. Nelson achieved well above what was expected of him during the academy. He did a fine job. As always, we made visits over there. We only got to make one to his, but I was gonna try to get the video set up on the monitor and unfortunately I ran out of time today, so everybody doesn't get to see the obstacle course that you ran while you were being raised. Anyhow, with that, here's your certificate from the State of Illinois, certified as a law enforcement officer in the state.
Firstly, in the year, the Optimus Club recognized one of our officers as Officer Near.
Mr. Nation? This is a little bit dear, near and dear to my heart. Everett does what I used to do for so many years in the drug unit for the central part of the state to cover my... Recently, during law enforcement appreciation week back in May, he was nominated and was awarded the Officer of the Year through the Optimus Breakfast Club. Unfortunately, we had things set up for recognition. He wasn't able to, he had a surgery that he had to take care of a shoulder and now he's back on the mend and about ready to hit things again, so yeah, soon. Mr. Nation has been very instrumental in the dismantling of several large methamphetamine and also heroin trafficking units through this area. Just been responsible for multiple kilos that was delivered to the Central Illinois Department of Defense. So without his efforts, our problems would be much greater than what they are. So, Mr. Nation?
Second.
Rule call.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Mary Ann Doughty?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Okay, and after the unanimous vote for amendments of the public hearing held July 17th, 2017, amendments of regular meeting held July 17th, 2017, amendments of the ordinance committee held July 9th, 2017, amendments of the finance committee meeting held July 19th, 2017, amendments of street service committee meeting held July 27th, 2017, amendments of the emergency services committee meeting held August 3rd, 2017. Any discussion or comments?
Yes, Your Honor. When we get to the ordinance committee, I'd like to have corrections discussed and when we get to the finance committee, I'd like to have another discussion on the correction that you presented.
Rule call.
Larry Bud, Charlie?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Next, the motion to adopt the ordinance directed at the lease agreement in excess of twenty years concerning city-owned real estate and keeping the acquisition parties to the LLC. Discussion or comments?
Yes, Your Honor, if I may speak to that before we take a motion to adopt the ordinance. Before you, you recall, the ordinance had attached a proposed lease agreement question. Since I last talked with you, I received a voicemail this morning about 7:15 in the morning from the attorney who's representing the proposed tenant. And that's the one I've been working with that assured me that we had an understanding and agreement as I sent out there to one as proposed. The voicemail to me was essentially that her boss, a vice president, which is apparently another lawyer in the legal staff, from Massachusetts, had said, "No, they're not going to sign it because there was two things in the agreement that the owner agreed to." Well, I called her back this morning. We had a rather heated discussion about that voicemail that I received. The long and short of it is, I pass out to you, it turns out that the two things they wanted, I think you can live with, that I would recommend, and that is, I pass out three pages to you here, highlighted in yellow. Forget the first page, it could go to, actually go to paragraph 22 and 24. 22 had said that unless it's to a, the way we wrote it, unless the sublease or assignment was to an additional subtenant, that they would have to have our consent to transfer this lease agreement to anyone else. And I had written, "Which consent can be denied under some discretion." They had a problem with that because they would, possibly would be assigning it to a subsidiary or an affiliate or what have you. And I said, "Well, that was the point, we want to make sure that whoever we deal with is going to be as responsible as you purport to be." So, long and short of it is, I changed the language to say, "Which consent may not be unreasonably denied," which means you can still deny it, but you have to have a good reason. If they would sign, just do it, in my mind, to Joe Bankrupt Company, we would say no and we would be upheld, it would be reasonable to deny it. Second paragraph, the second question issued ahead, was on the default clause, we had written that they had to respond for either a non-monetary or a monetary default. Within fifteen days, you'd have to correct it from the date we mailed the notice out. They wanted it to say that they would respond to remedy a monetary default within fifteen days after they received the notice. But as to a non-monetary default, they wanted thirty days to respond from the date of response. They said it usually was sixty. So, after we discussed this at quite some length today and expressing my frustration on why we were at where we're at, you know, why do you wait till the morning of the meeting to come up with this type of changes? I said that we gotta do something else. So, at the end of the day, I was able to get them to pay an additional $5,000 to make these two changes. So, on the first page of what I passed out to you, instead of getting $20,000 upfront plus $5,000 for attorney fees for a total of twenty-five, you're gonna get a total of $30,000 upfront, $25,000 for the upfront and then $5,000 for attorney fees. So, we picked up $5,000 today. When they, I got the agreement back to them about four o'clock or so, I've sent you a couple emails that she sent back to me this afternoon, is that if you look at the other page I gave you, it says on page six, they actually upped the insurance requirements that they have to comply with, because that's what they had, which is fine with us, it's our fate. Instead of having $500,000 for property damage, they agreed to pay a million. So, I highlighted in yellow those changes. The other thing that they added is to, they wanted the signature to be notarized, to be transparent, it will be court release, and then since it's gonna be a potential thirty-five year lease, ten years guaranteed and then five-year periods, that under Illinois law, if it's over thirty years possibility, you have to do what they call a PTAC form, PTAC transfer form, which may cost us thirty or forty bucks to make that transfer. So, I say, "Well, if I get something from you, more counseling with, you know, this extra money and something that's signed, then I'll do my best to recommend it to City Council." What I'm giving you is their signature page, I got the email, they've signed it. Supposedly by overnight mail, they're gonna send me the originals. We then, if you authorize this ordinance with these changes, the mayor will sign it, it is notarized, we'll send it back and they're supposed to then send us essentially thirty grand plus $12,000, so we get $42,000 for the first year. We're back by return mail when we sent to them, so it'll be a done deal, I believe. So, if anyone have any questions about these proposed changes?
I would just like to give you the pat on the back, you did a great job.
Thanks, Your Honor.
It's taken a long time, but you've put it to bed and I like that.
I like this question anymore.
Well, I was gonna say the same thing, but I also noticed that their notary public is also the lawyer that you've been dealing with?
No, that's her boss, that's the vice president.
That's the vice president on the signature page, but the notary is actually Sarah, who is who you've been dealing with?
Right. Some lawyers are notaries. I don't believe in that, because if you notarize the signature of the office, you're out of case.
Which is not good business practice.
Right, I'm not gonna comment on that. My firm doesn't do that.
Okay.
And I've instructed you folks not to use...
Well, which we don't do here at the city either, I just thought that it was, you know, I didn't think that it was a good thing for them to have, be notarizing their own signatures.
If you see the email that I sent to you this afternoon, the originals are being put into nice, delivered tomorrow, this came on 3/34 today, and that's what she gave me that scam, you know, so it's gotta be a reason to believe. So, I would recommend that you go forward with this ordinance with those changes you made and keep in mind that $12,000, as you know, every year gets up another three percent, that's why.
Motion by Oliver, by Bud?
Yeah.
Second by Oliver, by Burdell? Rule call.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Mary Ann Doughty?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
And mayor votes on this.
So, just as a reminder, each time you see the word "corporate authorities" under the motion clause, that means the mayor votes.
Mayor votes yes. Motion carries nine to zero. Comment?
I was just gonna say on this, we've been dealing with this, this October for two years. We've been dealing with this. And for us to get, will be $47,000 that they're going to be sending us?
Motion to authorize and direct the mayor to sign the vendor invoice number with 114075 for two project number tasks, 4342 for Crawford, Murphy and Tilly for professional service rendered from February 17th, 2014 through May 26th, 2017 for a total of $44,371.84. And vendor invoice number, vendor invoice number 114076 for CMT for professional service rendered from June 6th, 2013 through May 26th, 2017 for a total of $23,900 and be forwarded to the Illinois Department of Transportation for fund dispersion.
And I would suggest an adding, approve the payment saying pending receipt of dispersion from IDOT, I think that's been your past practice.
Pending receipt from, from IDOT. Motion by Oliver Boda, second by Oliver Walters, rule call.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Mary Ann Doughty?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Motion to authorize and direct the mayor to sign the city's service line agreement between the city of Tannadale and Calvary Baptist Church along with utility permit documents for the Illinois Department of Transportation.
Then if we can add upon receipt of the signed sanitary sewer service line agreement from Calvary Baptist Church, I think I've shared with you some emails I've received by their attorney. And the last one I got, I think it was on Friday, I believe, that they really made the changes, but I still don't have the fully name of the church that we add to, upon receipt of that signed agreement that I would suggest you would sign.
I'll make that motion with a comment, Your Honor.
Motion by Oliver Walters, second. Oliver Boda, comment?
I discussed this briefly today with Sue Dinwiddie and we're okay with this. If you gentlemen have read the bottom of page one and most of page two, this is gonna evolve into the church's responsibility, not the city of Taylorville's responsibility. They're gonna be the sole owner of it, they're gonna have to maintain it, repair it, take care of it and not rely on the city of Taylorville. And I also had a question, or city attorney part to answer. I'm not sure why they haven't complied with the things you've asked about. Who signs the documents, what kind of board is it, who's the legal name of the church or the owners?
Let me restrict that, because I do know that the attorney for them did send me an email with the resolution that I asked for, and I can check that out for sure, but I take a phone call to take care of that, so it's not like they've been uncooperative, because it's a matter of plain email type, one of them.
All right, okay.
That's the way I think we're gonna get it.
Rule call.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Motion to approve the purchase of five new workstations with Windows 10 for the city clerk's office network home store. Current upgrade for the laser fish system with new document scanner would cost, not exceed $15,000. Motion by Oliver Boda?
Second.
Second by Oliver Walters? Questions?
Yeah, do we have a proposal, where's that coming from? From Verizon local or...
Well, coming from CTI Tech.
Oh, it is?
That was the only proposal I had gotten so far, I would be happy to get others if you would like me to.
No, I just wanted, I'd like you to have local if you can, so for somebody else that can variety, we can get another estimate.
It's all through them, I don't know if there's anyone else locally that can provide all that.
Okay.
Oliver Boda?
I don't think there's a hurry on this, I mean, we're operating correctly, there's no problem with the current equipment.
Some computers are operating correctly, some are having some issues.
Okay, I don't have a problem with moving forward, because this is what we have currently down there. The laser fish system, that's not supported by CTI, is it?
Well, it backed up there too.
Okay, they've been having trouble with that for the last three years.
Yes, we have.
So, the current upgrade for the laser fish system?
The laser fish system upgrade has to, all of our computers have to be Windows 10 to support the laser fish upgrade and the laser fish upgrade will then allow you guys, when we give you a password, to look up documents yourself.
Oh, great.
Yes.
Now, the laser fish upgrade, what I'm asking is, the laser fish upgrade, is that provided by CTI or is that a separate...
No, laser fish is its own entity.
Okay, so, with the $15,000 for the attorney, should these be covered under one motion or should we have separate motions for each purchase? Probably, if you're gonna do, you're buying them all through...
No, laser fish is through laser fish and it is, I didn't bring them.
Then I think Oliver Walters' suggestion would be appropriate, break them down to your promotions, when you gotta buy from CTI Tech, you gotta open laser fish, and whatever dollar amount you wanna set aside.
We're ending up drawing separate checks is what I'm concerned about, so if they're reflecting in the motions.
Correct, laser fish upgrade is only $1,540 to bring us up to current.
So, the first motion by Oliver Boda, second by Oliver Walters, was just to purchase the five new workstations, correct?
Yes.
Rule call.
And that's not exceed $1,000?
Not exceed $14,000? $13,500 or whatever.
So, this also would include the network and phone switch, is that a piece of hardware?
It is.
Network and phone switch.
Yes.
Okay. The $14,000 and the $2,000?
Yeah.
Sure.
So, you're not rounding up, it's easy.
$14,000.
Okay, then I'll go over.
We can do it later.
Right, not exceed $14,000. Rule call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero, and I need a motion for the upgrade of laser fish system
not to exceed $2,000. Motion by Oliver Jones, second by Oliver Walters? Rule call.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Motion to approve the purchase of a 2004 Ford 350 XL dump truck from Bob Rehingsford for the street department at a cost of $14,500, with $14,000 coming from the street department budget and $500 coming from the parks cleanup committee.
I'll make that motion with a comment, Your Honor.
Motion by Oliver Walters, second by, second by Oliver Walters?
Yes. You gentlemen should have, I'll wait a second. The rookies do it all the time.
It was my brother, Blake, for supper.
You gentlemen should all have your packet, the sheets that I put together on this, I received from Bob Rehings, a discount of almost $3,000 over what everybody wanted for the vehicle. And I listed on the second page some of the important equipment that it has. And also, we had history, partial history of things that had been done to it. The previous owner had new attire put on, and fresh oil change, transpiration, filler fluid change. And the truck originally was the Tannley Park District, was traded in January 13th, 2016. They have two other people looking at this truck, one is a businessman, one is an individual. This size of dump truck is hard to come by, it don't last very long, it's got 60,000 miles on it. And we determined that it would be a useful thing for us to have in our department, street and sewer, for getting down the alley. It's also useful for spreading asphalt and rock because of the lower height of the dump bed on the back of it. I assume Dinwiddie has driven the vehicle, I've looked at it and operated the controls that have it driven. So, I'm recommending if we purchase this, the money is in the budget to do this, it'll be something that we'll get a lot of use for our department.
You have a special comment?
I just have a comment on, I thought at committee, that this was going back to the street committee for further review.
When I talked with Mr. Rehings and also with the sale people out there, they've got someone that's interested in buying this truck. And that's why I asked the mayor if we could put this correctly on the city council agenda. And to answer the questions that you gentlemen all asked, that's why this sheet was put together.
Rule call. Motion by Oliver Walters, second by Oliver Walters?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you're talking about.
Rule call.
Bernie Dorchenetz?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzati?
Yes.
Jim Olive?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
No.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
No.
Tom Burrow?
Yes.
Motion carries six to two.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Motion to authorize and direct the city attorney and the health and building officer who takes, motion by Oliver Dorchenetz? Second by Oliver Boda? Discussion?
I got a question. Hold on, this is directed to the city attorney, do we have to come back each and every time we start this process on these properties and say that we want to do it again, or can we just say, keep moving? I don't see, probably why do the motion, if you look at the statute that I sent to you, and recently I asked the mayor to, when the mayor and I talked about that, and Mr. Coward, we've already done the title work. These five properties, it's unlikely that you're going to get anybody that's interested in that property, either by ownership or lien, to do what we did the other three, to come forward and demolish it themselves. This is probably, if you want to go that route, you're probably gonna have to pay the expense of demolishing these five, if you're gonna go that. What I gave you, the statute was, you post a sign for thirty days, you send out the thirty day notice to all lien holders and owners of record, as best we can determine from the title work. And then we publish it in the paper and then after thirty days of this last thing that we do, then you'll have the right on the declaration of choice that this stuff is still open and vacant and creates a problem for the city. You have a 120-day window to take that down. If you miss that window, it decides you want to spend the money and you gotta start the whole process over, so that's why we barged the table, to see if you want to do If you miss that window, it decides you wanna spend the money, and you gotta start the whole process over, so, that's why we barged the table, to see if you wanna do all five, or one or two at a time, or however you wanna do, and you've set aside fifty grand. But if you're gonna do demolition work, you're gonna probably spend that pretty quickly with, um, people who's gonna do demolition, hauling away and so forth, it'll be close. That's why it's on the table, what you're talking about. If you want, we're ready to rock and roll and get the signs going, start that process and see what happens. Right, you, you gotta take, one point I was gonna make, last year, we, maybe fifty thousand dollars, we spent sixteen. We left all that money on the table last year. Now, if we're willing to spend that kinda money each and every year to get rid of these dilapidated houses, whether it's this process or any other process, it doesn't matter what kinda process, as long as we either get them fixed up, get them tore down, we need to stay on it. And, and according to our budget, fifty thousand was spent on getting rid of these houses. And it seems like we're getting, and I'm not placing blame on anybody, it seems like it's, it takes a lot of time to get it done, anything that we can do to expedite, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you guys, when it's fine, do it. But that's my opinion.
Mine too.
All of the Bud?
Well, I seen one of them, that it's got a tax sale.
One of them does, I think, yes, so, you know, the notice, they're gonna, the notice is gonna go to the county, there are, there are, there is a, a couple of properties that, uh, have been sold for taxes. I think one day it was the mayor and I, who was in there with this, uh, 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 calling the county, uh, to see if we could redeem the taxes ourselves and short circuit the process, and it wasn't gonna be able to happen that way.
No, that would call.
We withdraw that, with the attorney.
It says six hundred and fifty dollars on the house, it's posted on the house.
Right. That's all I want for it.
I'm sure that's what it was, it's posted on the house, six hundred and fifty dollars, is the tax item.
Well, I think it, there's a two-year process to wait when you do that, that's the, that's the issue, you wanna wait for time.
I'm just.
So, we tried to do the one, and we picked that, and we went through with the county assessor, the county clerk, and also the attorney for the county, to say, okay, if we go and redeem this from the person who bought the taxes, or we redeem one, what's the, the timeline, and how are we gonna do that? And, uh, yeah, probably when we send out some of these notice, those people that bought it for taxes will probably go back to court and ask for a sale and air, because they don't wanna mess with it, you know, it's an investment for them. Uh, but I, I think we were convinced after the conversation, it's not gonna get anywhere that way, because you don't wanna wait two years to do the process. So, this way is the expedited way by statute, is to move that along, so. But, you still have the issue if you bought it, to tear it down. And then either you bought it, the owners or somebody else has got a timeframe by law to redeem it back, their home. It's not gonna probably happen to contest with the, with that today, but you have to wait that timeframe. And I don't think you guys wanna wait two years to get rid of this problem. All we can vote.
Thank you, I'd like to concur with my fellow Alderman, fourth war, I think we need to, to stay aggressive, be more aggressive, and let's, let's start getting some of these houses tore down. Whatever we have to do to short circuit the system, uh, implement some speedier way of doing it, let's do it, let's find a way to do it, to get these houses tore down. Thank you.
This motion on the floor is the expedited procedure provided by statute, that's what I, I gave you guys in the email. Yes, sir.
If, if that one that Larry's talking about, for six hundred and fifty dollars, that presents a problem, then you, like you said, we have to start the process all on these five homes?
No, no, let's, no, that, if we buy it at a tax sale, then there's a different statute.
Oh.
They have a right to come in and redeem their home from us. After a certain period of time. This statute, if it's an open and vacant home, and it causes, it, it, and we determine that it is a hazardous city, we go through this process, and if they don't object and file something in court stopping our procedure, then it's an expedited procedure that after that thirtieth day, we got the right to go in and tear it down. And then you've got, within a hundred eighty days of leave after that, if you wanna go and, you'll own the property, but you can foreclose a lien for, for your expenses incurred to put the house down, if you wanna do that process. And that could be another two-year process, end up owning the property. And I think at one point, I think the mayor even try to get somebody to express an interest in one of them, to see if that person would purchase it, but once they looked at the home, they decided it wasn't one, they didn't wanna do it, so. I think rest assured, if the mayor's trying to get things moving, that's why this is on here tonight, we've tried it the easier way, since it's not working.
Roll call.
Bruce Jones.
A hearty yes.
Leland Zadi.
Yes.
Jim Olive.
Yes.
Martin Boden.
You betcha.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Absolutely.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. Motion to direct the city attorney to prepare the necessary paperwork to amend the zoning classification of the city-owned build state where the city's new water treatment plant will be constructed and operational, or to grant a special use under its current zoning classification to permit the operation of said water treatment plant and facilities, and to set an appropriate date for a public hearing concerning the same, and to submit this matter to the plan commission for its recommendation. Motion all of the Burdell?
Second, comment?
Second all of the Boden, comment?
Uh, yeah, currently, the map that I've seen shows it's residential one zone, and I think it would be the problem to make the change in zoning.
Yes.
Rather than doing a special use that was in, in the discussions that I read, so, I very much favor the changing of the zoning as we move forward, it's probably.
I concur with that also, we need to make, make physical change.
All right. Now, let me, let me address that, it, it was brought to the mayor's attention recently, that there's an R one, and I don't know why it was never rezoned and we didn't brought this back and say, hey, what happened, but, it is what it is, we gotta correct it. You've got two options here, you can downgrade from the R one to your AG one, which will allow for utility services, which is, I understand, that's what the current act is at. Or you could, uh, your, uh, ordinance book right now says, a special use for public services or utility buildings is a recognized special use in R one, so, either way, you can do it. So, I'm hearing two of you say you wanna go to the AG one, but, uh, either one will work.
A question I have on that, is, what, what the map shows here is that entire property that was once the country club.
Yeah.
Okay, well, part of that is owned by another individual.
Yeah, you're only talking about.
Now, we're only talking about the property that we, the city, own.
Yeah.
See, rezoned.
Because there's crops to the west, I guess, but, uh, and that, in, in, in R one, like agricultural uses are permitted, so.
You're, my story, my story, light agriculture, so, there, that's okay. But no, I think what we need to do is just make a change rather than.
I would, I would assume your planning commission's going to recommend that you guys.
I would, I would.
I'm gonna.
And we will allow them to continue working as we, um, get this changed over, so, that should be, roll call.
Leland Zadi.
Yes.
Jim Olive. Martin Boden.
If I, which way do we go with this, or like that?
Agriculture.
Come here.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Uh, there's a motion to approve repairs to engine number three by Global Emergency Products, pending receipt of the estimate, we have the estimate here. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve that, and then I'll comment afterwards.
Motion all of the Dorcheness, second all of the Walters, comment all of the.
The amount, uh, should be in there, should be the four thousand four hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. Uh, the highlight of it is, the, uh, this metal mitigant's removed and replaced the spotlight, and the chief's here, uh, chief, why is that being taken out of the, um, estimate of, of repairs?
Yeah, well, they thought they could do some piecemeal off of engine four, so they fixed it today.
So, save us money.
Right.
Okay.
Comment all of the.
My, my question was answered, your honor.
All right.
Okay, if, if I may.
All of the.
Um, total is gonna be seventy-three eighty-five ninety-seven is what I figured out, that's the duallys on the back.
Exactly.
Right, that's right.
Okay.
Seventy-three eighty-five ninety-seven, not exceed seventy-five hundred?
Now, which of your motion is?
That's the motion.
Yes, all of, not exceed seventy-five hundred? Second all of the Walters, roll call.
Jim Olive.
Yes.
Martin Boden.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Budd.
Yes.
Sean Burdell.
Yes.
Bernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Leland Zadi.
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero. City attorney update.
First matter I wanna bring to your attention, I, if you recall back in November of last year, the council adopted a resolution to support the hundred thousand dollar commitment for the, uh, proposed EDA-funded industrial park infrastructure for the PDA, if you remember that. And, uh, if you recall that resolution, your obligation was contingent upon, um, actually, um, PDA receiving the EDA grant and other private donor money, that would total seven hundred and twenty-five thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars, uh, towards the estimated project cost of one million six forty-four point four seven, as it was in the resolution. So, but, you know, I believe in your first meeting today, you went ahead on the, on the premise that the loan was gonna be, or the grant's gonna be coming, you released fifty thousand dollars in fake EDA then some money. Since then, we have learned that the grant application has been denied, and I think the mayor, I'll ask him to pick up in a moment, uh, I think he may have already talked with Mary Renner about, can't hurt the PDA, is where are we at, uh, in terms of resubmital of a, of a, of a grant application? Is that in the works, if so, was that likely to do that, if not, it's probably appropriate that fifty thousand dollars is paid back to the city, and we use it for when they take another shot at needing something else, so, I think, Mary, I think we've had some discussion.
Friday I had a discussion with Mary Renner about this, they are continuing and they're gonna resubmit the application, I think, I'm pretty sure it's due by August thirtieth. Uh, anyhow, I believe October thirty-first is the drop dead day, I mean, that's when the federal, this money either runs out or goes to another year, and we don't know if it will ever be implemented again or appropriated. So, uh, I asked, I told Mary Renner of our concern, and she said that, you know, she, we, we really can't get, get the money back yet until they deny this second, deny it if that is, and, uh, I don't think it looks real promising, but that's just my opinion. So, they are working vigorously, trying to, you know, the steps that were, the first reason why it was denied, so, uh, I think we'll just let them succeed until the deal comes to fruition, either they get the loan or, or they don't, and probably by the end of October, we'll know for sure, so.
And your discussions were, I assume, that they recognize if it is denied, it's a thousand and come back.
Fifty thousand, and, and then I also told her that it would be available next year if the appropriate funds were, were going after it, so.
Okay, any questions about that, gentlemen? Next item is the, on the rookie contract, that's briefly with, uh, Alderman Olive, I think it's, um, all that needs to be done, I, I've looked over the changes, I made the changes, I think from, at least at that point, I'm okay. And I think what needs, what they're asking now before they move forward is for us to sign the proposal that they put out. Yeah. To get paid, and then you come down a couple of weeks to do some survey work, I hope, but then they'll advertise the bids and get that project moving, so.
Uh, I don't have any mail prior, but I think it was to make sure that they would, that would fall in place also.
Okay, and then the third item I have is, uh, is Mr. Jackson behind me?
Yeah.
Uh, just as I ask him, he can talk to, talk to my back here, but, uh, have you had any luck with the McCarty exchange agreement, is she willing to sign the woman we gave her?
Uh, you don't give a one?
Uh, okay, I sent an email about a week or so ago.
Uh, I've been having issues getting my emails.
Yeah, I can imagine. Yeah, okay, if you'd stop by the purse office tomorrow, I think, do you have it?
No.
Oh.
Did you, did this send?
But there is an agreement up there.
Just give us a sign.
Is that what you sent to me?
Uh, yeah, by what, by what?
Yeah.
And I think we've already had the notice in the paper for the public hearing, it'll be on the twenty-first, so.
Yeah.
We're ready to go as soon as we show signs, so.
I thought she'd already signed it.
Uh, unless there's any.
Excuse me, that was contingent for the August twenty-first meeting.
Yeah, you're gonna have a public hearing, said six forty-five for the exchange agreement, now, hopefully she'll have the document signed, so, the ordinance will be ready the twenty-first she signs, and we make the exchange with them.
I've got that in my phone, you can.
We made a, write a comment.
Good.
Gang of properties, where are we at on that?
Uh, still have my thing to do with, thank you for bringing that up.
I don't know where we are.
That's right. Anything else? All the did before this one, sir. Uh, that's it, no other questions.
Any questions for the, the, the city attorney? Mayor will update, we have begun construction on the new water plant, Lincoln Trail is now open, cleanup is going well, we will begin to tear down five houses shortly. The cleanup committee is in discussion for additional homes to be demolished, so, if any other, you have any word with us, well, uh, our town is starting to look better, and I would like to thank the many volunteers that we have. Therefore, I have set up an award to be given to an individual or group each month who volunteer their services to our city. Every month, a person or group will be recognized at the city council meeting. September ninth is missions for Tater Bell, please, if anyone can help, contact Reverend Bill Kearns of the Davis Memorial Christian Church, they do good work, and, uh, they need volunteers, they had quite a few in the spring. They usually lack a little bit in the fall, so, if anybody in the audience or listening to it online or anything would like to volunteer, they can contact Reverend Bill Kearns. We're currently negotiating with the police and fire unions and hoping to avoid arbitration. Dan Jones from WEIU contacted me and advised if anybody has videotape of any events featuring Tater Bell, to please contact, contact him. He's looking for video spotlighting Tater Bell, and he could put them on the public access channel. I have his phone number, if anybody is into videotaping, would like to spotlight on Tater Bell, I know they had a, a little show there at the fair, that Alderman Olive and myself and Patty Hornbuckle were in a feud, and so, if anybody has any videotapes that I could get to WEIU, they would appreciate it, and that's all I have. Okay. Committee reports, discussion and a motion to approve the DAP and or deny table of men, or refer to an appropriate committee and whole or in part matters regarding the following subjects discussed.
Uh, ordinance committee, uh, before we make the motion, uh, Alderman Walters said that he would like to discuss a correction to the minutes.
Yes.
If you look at the second paragraph, it says Rocky Moore would continue to inspect the cars at the lake with Danny Coker and PSPGC complaining city car inspection. It's my understanding that our superintendent Alan Jackson was doing those inspections, and has been. Okay, well, Rocky said that he had been doing it.
He started it.
He started it.
But he retired.
Okay. So, you've been doing them? You've been doing them?
Yeah.
Okay, so, we'll, uh, move that to strike Rocky Moore in the minutes, put down, uh, the lake superintendent, rather than Mr. Jackson, that way it covers the lake superintendent.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, from that one? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Walters, I appreciate that, all I can do is go off of those who were right there at the meeting that night, so, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we have a motion to direct city attorney to prepare a ordinance to allow the city of Tater Bell to be golf cart community, and also to allow battery specialists plus golf cars to provide the permit and inspection, and provide a copy of the inspection report and all the records of fees to the city clerk's office. I'd like to make that motion with.
Second, then.
Uh, mo, uh, comment?
Motion all of Jones, second all of the Walters, comment all of the Jones?
Okay, I did have a discussion with, uh, the city attorney, uh, explaining what we discussed at our committee, uh, the parameters that we thought we were looking at, and he also knows that he has free, uh, access to Mr. Coker and his staff at battery specialists and golf cars.
Question I have, I may, after you and I spoke and reading these minutes, uh, the paragraph I love the motion, the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
Was some discussion about having a separate ordinance, leaving the one intact for the lake.
Yes.
And a separate one for the city.
Yes.
That's what we intend to do.
That's what we intend to do, and, of course, making it as, uh, simplified as possible for all of those who are on the legal line, in sound body.
All of the.
I wasn't able to attend that meeting, and I don't necessarily have a problem with the, the golf cars, but I noticed that the police chief wasn't included in the also present list at the top of the page, so, I'm assuming that you weren't at that meeting?
No, I was not.
And I was wondering, you know, you know, the inspections and the golf cars and getting them ready to be street legal, I get all that, the problem is, is with the enforcement, always boils down to that. Uh, there'd be three to five kids coming from my house at night four last, we didn't see the stop sign, and I don't know if it was a golf car or golf cart, but they didn't pay no attention to the stop sign, and night four last, there was a guy on the floor, we're gonna come down Adam Street, so. Enforcement is gonna be the key here, and I don't know how we're gonna do that after we make them legal, if we're having trouble, or maybe we're not having trouble, or maybe it's just my house, and maybe we're not having trouble with enforcing it when it's seen legal currently.
Uh, I know that there's been, uh, I've heard the guys have, have mentioned, uh, one issue, um, I'm trying to think of the name, but it's on East Popworth Street, um, and they've got, I believe it's a golf cart, it's not, I think it's not, either, you know, not the most people afford a golf cart, uh, and they've had issues with it, um, and they, they've seen it out. Matter of fact, I think they're gonna, uh, try to impound it next time, because they've had, had some issues with not only the lady, with the mom driving, but also, I believe, an eight or nine-year-old, uh, around, they've had complaints on it, but they haven't seen that, so. Um, while there, there is complaints, just like there is for the whole community, they will be, uh, you know, they will, they will work on that.
All of the.
So, the process that they're proposing, because I wouldn't have to make it, so I'm not exactly sure, other than from the minutes, the permitting and. sure, other than from the minutes, the permitting and the license and the tags or whatever you gotta have on this, that's something that the police force can handle and do it from a squad car and not have any issue as far as determining well somebody's, whether they're legal or illegal?
Um, I'm assuming it's all based on your city ordinance, so it would be a city ordinance violation.
All right.
License driver, Alderman, Walter?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. The only thing, I'll support this because all we're doing right now is asking the attorney to draft the ordinance that we're gonna have to prove down the road. I'm, I'm all for looking at this, seeing how it's drafted and we should, we're still gonna get some feedback from the public once this gets in the, in the media. So, depending on how the public feedback comes back, may sway how I vote to support this, but at this time, I think it's worth looking at, so therefore I'll be supporting it this way. Alderman?
Also, for the, for my benefit, we have some violations out around the lake also with golf carts, golf cars, and I'd like, when we get this passed, get this put in place, I'd like the police department to take a hardcore issue, that there's no warnings, if they're in violation, they get a ticket and we make believers out of it because it's not gonna be fair to the people that have paid the expense to bring theirs up to standards to be on the streets and that you let somebody yahoo's drive those other ones around and get by with it. So, I want, I want to implore the police department to be aggressive and ticket the individuals that aren't compliant. And I will turn them in also.
Rule call.
Martin Bud?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
My next department. First motion to not address the motion to accept reimbursement for Jeff Robinson and it should say for five thousand dollars, a warrant probe from Steve Kretz with the Danton not table at our, for the Sam Taylor Fund and they have, we have the signed documents on that, so.
Second.
Most of all, the Bud, second of all, the Jones, question, questions?
With this as a first point, what do we have left in the same paper? Have any lunch left?
Things about fourteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so it's soon to be done.
Thank you. Well, Walters, when all the benefits get, after the correction, I also want to make on the finance committee, yes.
I don't know which one it is.
Rule call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Earl Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to draw your attention to the first paragraph of the finance committee minutes, talks about San Jared Street fees. Alderman Boda and I discussed this, he brought this also, instead of six thousand dollars, it should be sixty thousand dollars.
Correct.
That's what T S D's paying, so I'd like to make that, have that correction.
Rule call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll make these fast, the first motion is to approve the request and just make the initial permit for the nice, for the K C's participating will drive corner of Wexford Main Cross by September eighth to Saturday, September the ninth from eight to four P M.
Most of all, the Walters?
Second.
Second of all, the Olive, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the request and issue special permit for the first transportation. Presbyterian churches, first United Methodist church for the comfort fee on Sunday, October the twenty ninth, two thirty to six thirty P M. with Ballina Street being blocked off on Market Adams.
Most of all, the Walters?
Aye.
Second of all, the Jones? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye. Make a motion to approve the request and issue special instrument for St. Mary's Church Fall Fiesta and to block off the corner of Adams and South Main Street and the entrance to the alley off of South Main and Washington beginning of Friday, September fifteen to August seventeen from two ninety P M. on Sunday, September twenty seventh.
Be September seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
All right. Most of all, the Walters? Second of all, the Jones? Comment, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the request and grant a special instrument for the thirty second annual chili fest to be held Saturday, October the seventh, Sunday, October the eighth, two thousand seventeen, with Teresa Set up closed streets and placed barricades on the south side of the Temple Square beginning at noon on Friday, October the sixth, and close the whole square at six P M. on Sunday, October the eighth until the complete cleanup is done.
Most of all, the Walters?
Aye.
Second of all, the Olive? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Make a motion to allow Superintendent Wiseman to bid concrete for the removal of free located Madison third streets.
Most of all, the Walters? Second of all, the Jones?
Bud.
Bud, excuse me.
I'm worried.
Uh, rule call.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Make a motion to allow Superintendent Wiseman to bid concrete for curb gutter asphalt for the Cherokee Street project and asphalt for Simpson Street and also James Street.
Most of all, the Walters?
Second.
Second of all, the Bud? Rule call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
The next motion we have listed, we have the information was passed out by Superintendent Wiseman this evening. Uh, I'll read that motion, but then we'll, we won't, we won't make a motion for that, but that was to table the rich England alley sewer repair until Superintendent Wiseman can get testaments from the city engineers as well as other engineering firms. This is for the mines and sites in the area down in the southwest end of town. You have those in front of you, gentlemen. We got three information bagged, one was from Wendell Survey, one was from Coon and Trello, and one was from Furman. Superintendent Wiseman and I discussed it briefly and looked at them and Superintendent Wiseman, do you want to tell how much your recommendation is?
I think Furman's was the cheapest, right?
Right.
And they're the ones that are doing Cherokee Street. I contacted Joe Green and he didn't give me an estimate or nothing, so.
So, I want to make, change that motion to approve Furman Associates for the southwest mines and sites overseas.
Most of all, the Walters?
Second.
Second of all, the Boda with questions?
Okay, we're looking at with ten five, is that the charge, the cost there? Plus not, plus plus not to exceed ten thousand five hundred dollars.
I think it's altogether with thirteen thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what I was gonna ask, for thirteen thousand, not exceed thirteen, so you're gonna add twenty five to that also, yes.
And Wendell did not do a complete.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Most of all, the Boda?
Yeah, I was under the impression during that, that Street three of the day being that, I don't remember the numbers, but it stated that the only thing the city was supposed to be responsible for was the inspection. As he said, it had inspection plus something else, so.
The staking, you had to stake out.
All right, I thought that was covered.
No, the staking, the staking asking the structure project, that would be included in that.
What, what we paid for was the design. We paid for the design of the project, not the staking or the inspection.
That letter's covered by D N R.
D N R.
Yeah, I thought in, in the literature, the D N R was gonna pay for everything but the inspection.
And the staking.
And the staking.
And they didn't pay for the engineering either on the design. Let's see, Taylorville paid that.
Right, but that might be, you said that, the engineering is already paid for.
But Joe Green did not.
The city general was gonna be the positive inspector on it.
But I asked Joe before I did any of this, I said, is a, is a staking also included in it being paid for? He said no, staking was extra.
And the, the, the reason I'm bringing it up is it seems like we got muddy waters sometimes. We need to try to figure that out more a bit, so we know exactly what has been done and I don't know if we need more literature during the meetings or if we need more literature at city council meetings or what. I'm pretty sure if I go back, it says on there specifically that it has been paid for.
It did, it did say.
And the only thing that the city was clear responsible for was the inspection and this is something on top of that now.
Yes, it is.
We didn't know that at the time, that's.
No, I didn't know that, that's gone the next morning.
We need to try to find that stuff out ahead of time.
And the point well taken. The time is of the essence on this because the money's there, it's available and what I'd like to see us do is if we get started on this, this portion of it, because they made us flip the project out into two and three, then as soon as we get this one started, I'm gonna apply for the next one. While the money's there and we've got the capability of getting this done, I wanna go ahead and try to get that southwest end of town cleaned up, smart mines and sites.
Rule call.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen? Yes. Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burd?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsonis?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
I need to go back to the motion.
We're gonna have to go back to the motion.
I need to go back to the fourth motion from the bottom, just for clarification, uh, that is the motion by Superintendent Wiseman to allow Superintendent Wiseman to bid concrete for the curb gutter and asphalt for Cherokee Street, but on the other one is and asphalt for Simpson Street and James Street. As I recall, when we, you and I went out and looked at James Street with that, that, that contractor, that gentleman, and he was gonna give us some ideas about doing the road, is I, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm just saying, I don't know how important it is to, if you're gonna just bid the asphalt, as I recall, on that slope on the side, they were gonna, they was gonna cement that, no?
No, they were gonna asphalt.
Aye.
Emergency services.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, several motions came out of emergency services, the first one was the motion to have global emergency products perform the annual preventive maintenance program A that costs one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for truck number one. I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Most of all, the Dorsonis?
Second.
Second of all, the Boda? Rule call.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Next motion was to, it says motion, but it's really a motion, we have, uh, local emergency products perform the aerial inspect, inspection and maintenance, that costs one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for truck number one. I'd like to make that in form of a motion.
Motion, Alderman Dorsones, second, Alderman Bro, rule call.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsones?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
You gotta get the labor.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, the next motion, uh, we kind of winged this one. It's a motion to direct city attorney Vermonaux to prepare an ordinance to allow for the sale of thirty analog pagers and chargers, those are the old ones, we get, we, there are no guide to us anymore. Is that the correct motion?
That's correct, I'll catch you.
Motion, Alderman Dorsones? Motion, Alderman Dorsones?
I risked it.
Rule call.
Who is the second, please?
Voda?
Thank you.
Rule call.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsones?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Mr. Wiseman, do you have a question?
Yeah, back, back on that bidding of concrete and curb, curb and gutter, that should have read, uh, bidding the curb and gutter labor, not concrete for the curb and gutter.
That motion's getting a lot of attention.
Motion, so, so, no.
Okay.
Motion to approve and ratify payments of bills, four hundred and fifty seven thousand, nine hundred and one dollars and forty six cents.
Okay, health insurance, one hundred thousand, one hundred and forty nine fifty eight, this does not include the vision, uh, this time. Alan White Brothers, Workers' Comp, September twenty three thousand, two hundred and eighteen. Diamond Brothers for their four different insurance policies, sixty seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy six twenty five. The total for insurance is one hundred ninety one thousand, one hundred and forty three eighty three. Electric, ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty nine eighty five. Telephone, one thousand, eight hundred and fifty six fifty. Big R, Ronson Walmart, two thousand, eight hundred and ninety nine sixty three. Garbage, four thousand, thirty eight oh six. Advanced title for Sam Taylor Fund, five thousand. Altor for two thousand, one hundred and ten thirty nine. Uh, United States Postal, one thousand. Meyer Austin Monal, six thousand. Donald and Jack Moon Broadus Real Estate Tax Remit, one thousand, two hundred and fifty three eleven. Sherman Williams, two thousand, one hundred and twenty seven thirty seven. United Capital Funding for Temporary Help, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen twenty four. Industrial appraisal, that's for the city properties, one thousand, two hundred and eighty. Wendell Surveying for Gagni Property, one thousand, fifty fifty. Health Alliance Reinvestment, one thousand, nine hundred and twenty two ninety five. Judd and Copper, two thousand. Global Tech for the Dispatch Room and Radio, seven, three thousand, six hundred and eight ten. Open Hall, three thousand, two hundred and forty eight fifty. Midwest Meter, one thousand, nine hundred and five eighty three. Police and Fire for Uniforms, three thousand, thirteen thirty seven. Police Department, Spring Cloverhead Door, one thousand, five hundred and fifteen. Fire Department, Max Fire and Safety for New Hire Turnout, one thousand, nine hundred and fifteen. Stuba Sports for Diet Equipment, Equipment and Supplies, one thousand, one hundred and nine hundred and forty five thirty one. Street Department, Nugget Bug for Visceral Spray, five thousand, nine hundred and forty. Paint and Limestone, nine thousand, six hundred and seventy seven thirty one. PH Broughton, one thousand, two hundred and seventy nine ten. J F Cody, uh, Cherokee Street Materials, three thousand, nine hundred and sixty five. Cardigraph Subscription Renewal, three thousand, forty five. Beecher City for Equipment, one thousand, five hundred and fifty. Sewer Department, Van Bear Engineering for Lift Station, five thousand, six hundred and eight twenty four. Water Department Chemicals, eleven thousand, six hundred, five hundred and sixty two seventy one. Midwest Meter, one thousand, nine hundred and five eighty three. Uh, that shouldn't have been there. Uh, Parrotie Well and Pump, uh, number, uh, well number four for pump repairs, eleven thousand, seven hundred and twenty five. Airport Aero Energy, thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty nine thirty. Lake Department, Two Brothers Tuck Pointing for the Shire House, ten thousand, four hundred and eighty two. They sold the forty, one hundred and forty thousand, twelve dollars and three cents.
Motion, Alderman Bud, and second, uh, second, Alderman Bro, to ratify the bill?
You want me to, you say you need a second? I, I can do that.
Rule call.
Larry Bud?
Yes.
Sean Burdell?
Yes.
Bernie Dorsones?
Yes.
Bruce Jones?
Yes.
Lee Landzadi?
Yes.
Jim Allen?
Yes.
Martin Boda?
Yes.
Earl Walters?
Yes.
Motion carries eight to zero.